I do have a statement to make. Mr. Drescher is on paid administrative leave until his retirement on December 31st, 2019. In Mr. Drescher's absence, Ms. Melody Shepherd will assume the day-to-day oversight of school duties. Community participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Community participation is intended for the public to get input on relevant school issues and not intended to be a question and answer period, as this may be the first time the board has heard this information. Please do not expect individual responses or any comments by the board at this time, but be assured that any concerns will be reviewed. Please print your name on a sheet at the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comment to three minutes. Is there one who would like to speak?
Madam Chairman, I am Kim Oakland. I am the President of the Warren County Education Association. Actually, I get to say I'm co-president now because we have a new co-president, so it's nice to share those duties. But I just wanted to say that we have had for a number of years a very good working relationship with the school board and the central office, and I know that that will continue. We have worked with Ms. Shepherd for a number of years now, and so I look forward to continuing to work with her and representing our teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Oakland. No? Recognitions. Recognition of 2019 BSBA Media Honorable Recipient Michael McCool and the Royal Examiner.
The Warren County School Board has submitted Mr. McCool's name to the Virginia School Boards Association in recognition of his support for our local school board work and for the public school students in our community. We want to thank him for his commitment to the students in our division. His work has aided in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can have for the children who attend them. We would like to present this certificate to Mr. McCool, so he will come up.
You've got to turn here and face this camera over here, right? Thank you so much, I really appreciate it and all the things you do, and I know we've worked a lot with the DECA program at Warren County with Mr. Gardner, and so we plan bigger and better things than what we've done in the past.
Agreed.
Really appreciate all your support.
We thank you for your help.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there a motion for consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept consent agenda as written.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Reports. College Fair 2019 at Skyline High School. Mr. Fox.
Good evening. I'll wait just a moment for Mr. Grant to come and help me out here a little bit.
What if we do without Mr. Grant?
That is a fair question. College Fair 2019. So, the 2019 College Fair was held at Skyline High School just last week on September 25th from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., and there were a ton of representatives there from our colleges. Matter of fact, there were over 71 colleges and universities and four branches of the military chain. And it was an impressive showing. This is the 11th year that the College Fair has been held, and it's been held at Skyline High School all these years. So, we had students from Skyline, Warren, from LuRae, Page County. We've also in the past had several local private schools that have come and attended. And frankly, this is an incredible event for our students. I would, as I've seen it now, I'm going to invite everyone from the board to come next year. I think you'll need to see how impressive this event is. Students spoke with recruiters and municipal representatives from local schools. You can see one of our students there with representative from Old Dominion. So they met individually and they met in large groups of friends where they walked around and had a large, good time meeting each other and meeting representatives. Virginia schools were well-represented. You can see the representative there from Virginia Tech. And we also had from several other states. The Florida State representative is there, Marshall University, and right around the corner was James Madison and Dane Allison. They asked me to make sure to point that out. Should have taken a picture of them. The Army, the Air Force, Army Marines, and Navy all sent their recruiters, and they were not, lots of students stopped by to see what was going on. We had organizers that, it was so large they had to open up both sides of the gymnasium. Had to open up the doors, and frankly, even then it was a little bit tight. And I'd like to thank Greg Livis because there were so many people that came, so many recruiters and so many colleges, that we didn't have enough tables at Skyline High School to hold the event, so the maintenance department made it possible. The Skyline Athletic Association provided water and cookies. And Skyline High School, they greeted everyone warmly as they came through. So, again, we had tons and tons of people. Hope I'm not going through here too fast for you guys. We were very pleased to offer this opportunity for our students and the students from surrounding counties. When they finished with us, they went over to Winchester, and that was students from the Frederick County Schools in Winchester. But it's very nice that we're the first stop on their tour. So this is the College Fair 2019. I wonder if you have any questions or comments?
Was this just for seniors or juniors and seniors?
This is for juniors and seniors.
Have any idea what your opinion was? Not above, roughly?
Roughly, well, we had, let's see, the entire senior class and entire junior class from Skyline, so there's 400. Then Warren County High School brought somewhere between 50 and 60 students over. LuRae brought eight bus, Paige, it seems like Paige Barnes Bus also. I didn't do my math there, but close to 500.
I see. Okay.
Any other questions?
You're welcome.
Stay where you are. The Trek to Excellence.
I'd like to stay here even longer than I'm going to stay here because I was involved with the Trek to Excellence last year, but we've had a bit of a change of guard. And Carla Scott is now in charge of our Trek to Excellence, our introduction for teachers new to Warren County Public Schools. And she's also in charge of Trek Two and Trek Three for our teachers that are in their second and third here. So I'm going to bring Carla Scott up.
I'll just bring myself. So I was told 10 minutes, I could talk about this for 10 hours because it's my favorite, I love doing this job. It's the most awesome job ever. I taught 26 years, and education is just in my blood, so I like being at a place where I can help the next generation of teacher. It's exciting. So I just came to do a brochure, so I'll start from the beginning. We send out a welcome letter and a brochure about our induction program along with their contract, so that's the first contact we make with our new teachers is a welcome letter and this brochure that comes with them, their contract in the mail. And then the next thing they will attend the Trek to Excellence Institute Week Long Teacher Orientation. This year it was June, July 29th through August 2nd. They're with us for the morning, and then in the afternoon they go to their schools and have time there. So this is our group this year. We had the Trek to Excellence Teacher Orientation Week at Warren County Middle School and the Commons Area, and it was perfect. It was the best venue ever. It was just great. And they sat at the tables in groups with their schools so they could kind of get to know each other, and that was the end of the week picture. So here's some of the things we do. We start out, every morning they'll sign in, and we give them a little gift, like we gave them a Warren County Public Schools mug, and we gave them a stress ball, so caffeine to get them going, and a stress ball to calm them down, and then other little various teacher supply type gifts each morning to welcome them every day. They got a hot breakfast, Sue Ann Fox, and the food service gave really good breakfast. All of us there were like, well, what do we do after this week? We'll have to fix the breakfast. It was really good. We give door prizes out all day. Each school creates a really beautiful, nice gift basket and donates it, and we give those out. And then the community, also Tammy Howley at the office there at the front desk, she's magic at getting donations, and we had various restaurants and community businesses to give some gift cards to give out during the week. It also helps the new teachers that come here from other places to go visit our businesses to see if it helps promote them. And then we have a big prize on Friday from the school board office. We have lunch with the principals and induction coaches on that first day. They have a Chamber of Commerce luncheon, I'm sure you're familiar with that. That's really nice, they like that a lot. Then we also have presentations. The Personnel Department has presentation, and Kim and Jay Deck did a really nice, WCEA came and did a really nice presentation. The Instructional Resource Team, we were all involved and did presentations on the classroom management and the kinds of things they need to know as their first week starts. And the Technology Department did a really nice presentation. We did something new this year, this was Alan's idea. We had principal scenarios. So principals and assistant principals came, and we set up stations, probably 12 stations, so 12 administrators came, and we put the teachers in small groups and they rotated around, and each principal had like a scenario, like what if this happened, what would you do? And then they had a discussion about it, and it was really nice. We got a lot of good feedback from that. And then of course in the afternoon they worked in their schools, and then we had after-hours activities, which were very fun. It was a nice time to do some social networking, because like I say, some of these kids, I call them kids, because to me they're kids, they come from out of state, and the first time they're ever on their own in a new place, so it's kind of important they meet each other and socialize and have some time together. So here's a picture of the cavers. Alan went over and spoke with them. They were very generous and gave free passes to every teacher, new teacher in our program. And a big group did go that day, even though it was raining, it was really drippy in there, but it was fun, everybody had a good time, and then they went to Spunkers for dinner after that. So that was kind of one of the best after-hours. And feedback we got was in these are quotes, we did take a little survey at the end. So these are some of the feedbacks, loved the positive nurturing atmosphere, so very engaging, great energy, humor. Food was delicious. Prizes were a nice surprise. They liked discussion and hearing everyone's input. They liked the principal, this scenario thing that we did. They did say we needed better seating. So we realized sitting at the cafeteria tables all for a whole morning was probably not a good idea, so next year we're going to have chairs with backs. But that was really one of the only negative things we got. So the next step or the next path on the Trek to Excellence is our monthly meetings. We meet with all the new teachers monthly for our continued professional development and support. We also have another layer of support. Every school has an induction coach, and every teacher has a mentor to provide in-house support. And that kind of looks like the induction coaches meet with them every month to talk about things that are specific to that month. So in August, all the new things that they had the forms they had to fill out, in September there were various things that have to be done in September, and as the months go by there are certain things that have to be done, so they meet with them once a month. The mentors check in with them pretty much every day, the first month or two, and then they kind of wean them away, but they're always there. They get to observe in other teachers' classrooms, so they can see master teachers in action, and so that helps. We also talk to them, and the mentors and the induction coaches are there to help them with self-care, and about right now actually, they're becoming a little overwhelmed, the reality is setting in, honeymoon's over, and this is a job, and so they have to prioritize and be able to balance work and life and those sorts of things. And they continue with that social networking. Again, these guys are here on their own for the first time, some of them, so it's good for them. We're always better if we have a support group, a social support group. And our Instructional Resource Team is outstanding. They helped put on the whole week, Orientation Week, and it's amazing. And I really like the way the new teachers see the Instructional Resource Team and Alan and Lisa as a team that supports them, that we really do make them feel like this is, we are your support team. And so right now, every new teacher's classroom has been visited by a member of the Instructional Resource Team. We divided and conquered, every classroom's been visited, and every teacher's been giving some feedback so far, so they know we're still with them and we're going to continue with them through the year. So Trek Two and Three is how we keep that ongoing support. So the focus for years Two and Three is to help them. So first year is, most time, some of them don't know what they don't know, so we have to help them with that. And the second and third year, they're starting to know what they don't know, and start self-reflecting on their practice and getting better at it because they're learning what they need to do. So in September they had to videotape themselves teaching a lesson and do a self-reflection. November they'll do another one, and we'll have a meeting where they kind of discuss it with a peer and view each other's lessons, and then in February they'll do it one more time. So we kind of are trying to get them to start reflecting on their own practice and how they can make improvements for themselves. And then we always try to share some sort of inspirational video, and this was our September video. I'm the greatest man in the world! Check One. I'm the greatest man in the world! Check Two. I'm the greatest man in the world! Wow! I'm the greatest man in the world! So that's all I have, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I just thank you for all that you all do. I know a lot of these teachers come here, and they're totally lost, and just having the mentors is a great thing. I mean, we've had a couple of grades in some schools where every teacher is a first-year teacher, right?
Yeah.
And if they didn't have mentors and other people, that they could go and cry on their shoulders or ask for help and guidance, they'd be lost, so thank you for all the support.
Yep, we love it.
Acceptance of donation. Up did I? Up? Yes, never mind. Back up. Reports. Superintendent report. Ms. Shepherd.
I was getting there. So we just calculated our September 30th membership, and we have 5,225 students, which represents 75 more students than we budgeted for, which is great news. We've received accreditation information, and seven of our schools are accredited, and we applaud their accomplishments. Two of our schools, E Wilson Morrison Elementary School and Skyline High School, are accredited with conditions. E Wilson Morrison Elementary School has made significant gains in their academic achievement over the last year. The staff and the students at E Wilson work tirelessly to improve their performance, and they're continuing that work this year. I have no doubt that their achievement will continue to grow. Skyline High School is accredited with conditions due to the number of students who were chronically absent last year. Attendance is essential for students to do well in school, so we have put several processes in place, and we expect attendance to improve this year. October is National Bullying Prevention Month. Warren County Public Schools addresses bullying and bullying behavior in a variety of ways, which are all evidence-based practices. In collaboration with the Warren Coalition, we offer the Unhappy Program, Second Step, Life Skills, and Anger Manishment Program. This winter we will be offering the same SCAP program for our middle school students. At the school level, we have numerous practices, which include school counselor groups and instruction, the Great Kindness Challenge, peer mediation, ripple effects, Reaching Out Now, Girls Leadership Program, Digital Citizenship, the BIG program at E Wilson Morrison, check-in, check-out program, and positive behavior supports. Our schools value kindness and strive to have an environment conducive to learning. We have 15 students who are participating in the Project Courage, which is a trauma intervention program with individual and group counseling. This program supports students in the classroom and in the community. The First Lady of Virginia visited the students and staff at E Wilson Morrison Elementary School and Ressie Jeffries Elementary School Preschool Program on Thursday, September the 19th. Ms. Northam is interested in early intervention, which involves the services and supports that promotes a child's age-appropriate growth and development. Special Olympics basketball has started at Hella Barber Elementary School on Tuesdays for the month of October. For more information, you can contact the special services office. And Warren County High School Band is taking orders for their annual fruit sale.
Thank you. School Board reports. Mr. Williams?
Yes, Madam Chair. A couple things. Melody, Ms. Shepherd was talking about, you know, the different schools of E Wilson and Skyline and being provisional right now, and attendance is a big deal, and that's something that changed this year for us, attendance being graded, so to speak. And I can speak for E Wilson because I see it about every day. I see those folks very engaged out front, and I can speak for ASROs because I go there every day, and the people are engaged from the teachers that I see and the SROs that are there. They're all, you know, most of them call the children by name, which is impressive as heck to me that they remember in the first week's time the children's names. And you can see the little kid's face has light up, so I think that encourages them to get excited because, you know, they're recognizing, and I like to see that. That's great. And I'm sure the other schools are doing the same thing, I just don't have the opportunity to be at those schools at that time. The next thing we have, received a message from Lord Fairfax. We had a few students that need a little financial help that are dual road. Sent a message out to a group of people, and I met a gentleman from California, and he said, he heard me talking to somebody else, and he's like, what can I do? I said, well, you know, whatever you can do. And he wrote a substantial check, and it's the first time I've ever met the gentleman, but he felt education was that important, and he lives in California, so it's nice to see. Not only local folks jumped right on it, but here's a gentleman, you know, what, 3,000-plus miles away, and just said, I'll do it. So that makes you feel good, and that's good for the children of our community. Lastly, I'd like to wish Mr. Drescher a good life and thank him for his service that he did for Warren County Public Schools. I think he gave us his all every day. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen?
Arnold, nice words said for Greg. I think as I leave the school, the school board, the end of this year, I think I really enjoyed working with Greg in so many areas. It just takes forever to think about him all, but he's always been open, he's been compassionate to students, and he has been probably one of the biggest assets Warren County School System has had in many years. And I'm going to miss it. Of course, I'm not going to be here, but I can still go see him.
Thank you. Ms. McKeefen? Thank you, goodness, for those comments, and I'd just like to say ditto. And that's all I have. John?
A couple things. One, I saw a group of folks that I recognized at the hospital today, and they were some of our staff and teachers, and they were getting their diabetes certification so that they can deal effectively with some of our students that may have needs and that kind of thing. And found out that, I think it's like a quarterly or periodic program that Valley Health, training that Valley Health does for our staff, and I think that's great. I want to thank Mr. Goodman for being able to come down and see E Wilson when First Lady Northam was there. Particularly impressed by the big group. They're doing a great job, and those fellows have turned out fine. To Mr. McCool and the Royal Examiner, we appreciate everything you've done. You've filled a much-needed function in our community, and timely coverage of all of our school board meetings, and any functions that you're aware of, you usually come and try to film those and get that out to the people in real time, and that really helps. They show us warts and ales, but we do appreciate their coverage. And the final thing is, I said this under oath, so I feel comfortable saying it now, there is nothing that makes me feel that Greg Drescher ever gave anything less than 100% of his time, attention, and skill to leading the school system. And his focus was clear at all times that our students and staff deserve the best opportunities to succeed, which we could give, and I wish them all the best.
Thank you. I also just want to state my appreciation for Mr. Drescher's 37 years of dedication to education, and 34 of those years were here in Warren County. His passion for education was evident in many of the programs that he initiated, and I have three pages of lists here of those programs, but just to highlight a few, some of the things to benefit our students. Students in grade six through 12 now all have Chromebooks to use as learning tools, and elementary schools have Chromebook cards for each grade level. E Wilson Morrison Elementary became a CEP school, which provides breakfast and lunch at no charge to all of its students. The implementation of summer mobile food programs. The implementation of family engagement coordinator, which generated a significant increase in enrollment of preschool students. The development of MORE After-School Middle School Program. And then things that he initiated for staff, one of his most recent was the competitive market adjustment for teachers with 11 to 25 years of experience. And the enhanced platform for self-care for staff. That was part of his commitment for retention of teachers. And something he did for all of us on the board was to get the implementation of the board docs up so we can have everything on computer and we don't have paper that we have to recycle and waste now, and that has been a big help for me. So I just want to thank Mr. Drescher for his guidance and all he's done for our system and for his friendship. Action agenda. Adopt Corporate Resolution Agreement for Warren County Public Schools, Section 125 Flexible Benefit Plan. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. Warren County Public Schools has provided employees with an opportunity to participate in a Section 125 Flexible Benefits Plan since January 1st, 1989. Employees are able to make pre-tax contributions for health care, dependent care, and health care flexible spending accounts as a result of the school board's participation. This resolution itself is merely a housekeeping detail from CPN, which is the Corporate Planning Network that we run this through. We've already filled out all the other forms that we need to continue to do this. When any time that we see the word "resolution" or something like that in the document, normally we bring that to the board just to seek their approval for the school board chair to sign. So this program's been in effect for quite some time. It's been extremely helpful to our employees over the years, and we wish to continue to serve in this role.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Warren County School Board adopt the Certificate Corporate Resolution from Corporate Planning Network for Warren County Public Schools, Section 125 Flexible Benefit- Section 125 Flexible Benefits Plan, and authorize the school board chair to sign the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Addition of one kindergarten teacher at Leslie Fox Kaiser Elementary School. Mr. Smith?
Yes. One additional floater kindergarten teacher position is being requested for Leslie Fox Kaiser Elementary School. Warren County Public Schools receives roughly a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in funding from the K-three primary class size reduction program. A specific requirement of receiving funding for this program is that K-three class size enrollment must remain twenty-four students or fewer. LFK has four kindergarten classes. Class enrollments are twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. The position is titled "A Floater Position" as this position would follow LFK kindergarten's class through their K-five experience. If the numbers do not justify the position, the position will either be absorbed into another vacant elementary position through attrition or the position will not be refilled. The teacher candidate would be aware of these stipulations prior to the official hiring process. The cost and financing, obviously by the grant that we receive, we would receive funding for that position as well as our ability with staff turnover this past year to fund that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So this is a teacher that's hired initially as a kindergarten teacher, and she'll just be looping up each year?
That's correct. That's why it's called a floater. That's why it's called a floater because as that class continues to go through, those numbers realistically could remain the same or they could, they become more and those type of things. Or they could become less, obviously. So that person follows that grade. So not necessarily those particular students each year. And it floats as it goes. We've used this model in some of our other schools. And normally, when we get to the fifth grade level, if we start at a grade level prior to that, normally through attrition, if we do not, if we no longer need that position, then we can fill that person back with a position that we already have that's vacant.
Mr. Smith, what happens? Because this is K through five, and those kids say they stay constant, and we always have this person in place. And when they go in sixth grade, will that teacher move to another school? Or will we be able to absorb those extra children where our classrooms be fine? Or is this just specific to the grant for the K through five?
Well, it is, it is specific to the grant that it's a K through three class size reduction. So it is, it is specifically so that we can maintain, we can maintain a smaller classroom. We can also maintain the funding that comes along with that, not only for this position but for other positions as well.
We have a classroom available, space?
Yes, we do. They are actually working through the logistics right, sorry. They're looking or working through the logistics right now about how they're actually going to do it. So they may end up moving a second-grade class so that the kindergarten teacher will be with the other kindergarten teacher. So they're working through those logistics now. There is one space available.
Does she want to create a fifth class?
Yes, it will create a fifth class in kindergarten.
So we'll have smaller classes together?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approves the addition of one kindergarten floater teacher at Leslie Fox Elementary School due to classroom size.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Acceptance of donation. Mrs. Shepherd?
Thank you. Catherine Glasscock is donating snacks at each of our schools for the hungry, food-insure students in the county. She approached Mr. Drescher a little over a month ago to do this, and she's collected snacks from the community and from stores. And so she is wanting to donate those to our, to all of our schools.
Is this the same Catherine Glasscock, Katie?
Yes.
That is one of her Girl Scout?
Yes.
Okay, great. I know she's worked very hard on it. Wonderful. Is there a motion on that?
Chair, make a motion to move in the donation of snacks by Catherine Glasscock for hungry, food-insure students at each of the schools be accepted with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks to Katie. First reading of the 2020-2021 School Calendar. Mrs. Shepherd?
Thank you. Policy ACID requires the school board to establish the division's calendar in accordance with applicable regulations and to include contingencies for making up teacher days and teaching hours missed for emergency situation. The attached calendar is being presented for your consideration for the 2020-2021 school year. The key information is school would start August the eleventh. Would be the first day of school. This is a Tuesday. This current year, we start school on a Monday. But the feedback from our calendar committee has been that they would rather have a shorter week that first, that first week of school for kids to start getting into the routine of school. The end of the first advisory will be October the fourteenth, 2020. Fall break will be November twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. The end of the first advisory will be December the twenty-second. Winter break would be December the twenty-third through January the fifth for students and December twenty-third through January the third for staff. There will be two professional days following the winter break for staff. Spring break will be March the twenty-ninth through April the fifth, and this will be a guaranteed spring break, which means that it will not be used for weather makeup days. The last day of school would be June the fourth. There are seven built-in weather makeup days, and students will not be in school for a hundred and eighty days if we do not miss more than seven days due to weather. Time will be taken off at the end of the school year. And there are thirteen professional development days included in the calendar. So this is the first reading. Our committee has met a couple of times this year. They have shared this calendar with their, with their staffs. And after tonight's meeting, I plan on emailing it to all staff members to get feedback. And the next meeting, October the sixteenth, I believe, will be the second reading and discussion, and then recommendation for approval on November the sixth.
If you use all of your weather makeup days, do they, I know we used to extend the school day by a few minutes to make up that time. Is that still?
So we can do, they call it banked time, and we have several days that we would have to miss beyond the seven in order to have to extend the school day. So we have several that we could use banked time for. Yes.
So being born is the?
Would be the last day of school. It is the hard last day of school.
But it's possible that, no?
We're not going beyond June the fourth.
And graduation will be the week prior?
So we haven't determined that yet, but likely, yes. Which would be, I think, Memorial Weekend, I believe.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Discussion of the School Board. The VSPA Title IX Best Practices and Training and Compliance Workshop is January the twenty-ninth at the VSPA office. If you're interested in attending that, please let Mr. Valentine know. I believe that's the same workshop that was done here last week? Okay. Work session. We now need to have a work session where we will have discussion of the 2011, or 2011B and 2012A bond refunding opportunity for the Virginia Resource Authority to 2019C fall bond refunds. Are we going to move into the conference room?
Yes, please.
Okay, so anyone who would like to join us in there for the work session?
There's two deals that the county did. Well, the county did a bunch of deals back in 2004, which was for, you know, the big stuff for Skyline High School and Warren County High School. There was another deal in 2009, I think, that was for renovations to?
Luray Avenue.
Luray Avenue, which is now?
Skyline.
Now Skyline. So those deals got done in 2004 and 2009. Those deals got refunded in different pieces in 2011 and 2012. And so that's what we're looking at right now is Virginia Resources Authority has come to the county and basically said, "These two deals look like they have good refunding potential if the county wants to refund them." So I think you guys got a kind of short version of this.
They haven't received it yet.
Oh, okay. And so this is what Ted presented yesterday morning. And the real meat of all of both of these is on this. Here it's kind of, he's right. On page two. On page two of the 2012 days. And I'm gonna get this in there. And then on page four of one of the second line. Maybe. Well, yeah, if you look at it like this, yeah, so maybe one and two. Okay, he did a condensed version for you. Because this is, this, these are the stuff that's really important, which is it shows you each of these deals. This is the term for the deals as they currently exist. They can show through, one goes through 2029, one goes through 2035.
Pedro, you want?
One.
The short version, right?
The short.
You want an extra?
Yeah.
There you go.
It's one and two. So two is the 2012A deal, and then one is the 2011B. And so this is set up so that it's gonna be, the collateral is exactly the same as the deals that are already in there, which is one of them is secured by Skyline High School and Warren County High School. The second one is secured by Luray Avenue Middle School. That collateral for each deal is gonna match exactly what is in each of these deals, so none of that is gonna change. And these are the, the years that you see for each of those. That's how long both of these deals already run out. They go out, one of them goes out to 2035, one of them goes out to 2029. Well, one of them, those are fiscal years, so one goes through 2034, calendar year 2034, and then it goes to the end of calendar year 2020, which corresponds to those sort of years. So you see on each of those this annual savings number at the end. So that's how much the county is projected to save if we do these deals based on the current market, you know, estimates that Davenport shows here. So this is just based on a snapshot of the market, how it looks on, I think, the twenty-fourth. You know, it was, it was last week or maybe beginning of this week. They may have updated it since then, but it's within the last two weeks. And so what that shows is if, if the county and the school board authorizes this, then if we, if they were to price these bonds immediately, you would have savings where you have on the columns on the left. The important number is the net PV savings. And that's, you have the gross savings and the net PV savings. So the gross savings is basically the total amount of dollars that you, that is saved by doing this over the whole life of the deal. There's this notion of present value, you know, discounting that to a present value, which is basically you have all those dollars that are out in later years that you have to kind of discount the dollars today to kind of equate them to the stuff. So it's a little bit less for the longer things, but that's what, that, the net PV savings basically, you know, compares apples to apples in terms of things that are out in the later years. And then they come up with the, the net PV savings, which is on the one, it's about seven percent, the other one it looks like it's about fifteen percent. And again, that's just a projection based on the market that we're seeing now, so that could change. You know, the VRA deal is not gonna price for about another month or so. But that's, if, if, you know, we went with the market as of a week ago, that's what this deal would look like. So that's pretty good. What is generally, there's not a real legal requirement as to what that savings target should be, but generally, financial advisors and, and I guess kind of us as bond counsel, I mean, we don't really do the financial side of it. But a financial advisor is basically gonna recommend to not do a saving, you know, to not do a refunding for savings if that saving is less than three percent. So this is, you know, even the lowest one is twice what that target is. So both of these look pretty good. So in terms of what the school board is being asked to consider is resolutions that are basically just amendments to these existing lease documents because the collateral is owned by the school board. So what the county would be approving is the actual terms of whatever this deal is. So they would be setting whatever the savings target is. Resolution they have for them is set at that three percent number, but they could go up or, you know, I mean, they could approve something higher than that. And so if it, if we get to thirty days from now whenever VRA is in our price and the market has changed a lot and they can't hit that three percent number, then the deal just goes away. There's no, you know, there's no obligation on the county or the school board's part to do anything or pay for anything. It's just VRA, you know, they have to factor that in to when they price things. And if it doesn't hit that, then the kind of the deal goes poof. So.
Page three on this graph here is the aggregate. Yeah, it's a combined, so you can see what the combined savings, annual savings and yearly savings. Annual savings would be in the total savings.
And so the, kind of, I guess the relevant, relevant points for you guys is this is, this is collateral that is, that is owned by the school board. It's already encumbered with these existing deals, but none of the terms of that is gonna change. It's not gonna be out any longer. The lease is not gonna run out any longer than it already does. All of the projects that were originally financed by all this stuff were all school projects. The draft resolution that we've prepared is kind of just based on the standard stuff that we have on these VRA deals. When we, there was a, a different sort of county financing in the spring that related to Rusty Jeffries and some other stuff. There were some tweaks to this language based on kind of outside council looking at stuff, and we made conforming changes to this. So that language is in there, just kind of making a finding that, you know, this is all in reasonable and good business judgment of the school board. And so we've added that language to kind of the standard language that VRA would be looking for. We've got drafts of all the documents from VRA Bond Counsel, which we're looking at, and there's still kind of a review process going there. But the, you know, the core stuff that we would be looking for in terms of those documents, that's all in there. There'll probably be some edits and stuff as we go forward. But in terms of our review as Bond Counsel of the county, we think it's all pretty standard with what the existing kind of arrangement is. So that was me talking a lot, but I'm certainly happy to answer questions that anybody has.
All right. Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Okay. Question. What's the cost to buy, sell, refund? What's, what's the hard number we're gonna pay to Virginia Resource Authority?
The?
I've got a number I came up with, but I want to see if I'm right.
There's, in the VRA deal, there's two components because there's the local cost of issuance, which is us and Davenport and kind of everybody else. And then there's the VRA side of it, which they have their own bond counsel and stuff. So I don't know what that total number is. It's probably totaling somewhere around the two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty range, but I don't know that that's.
What about the bottom of page three there? There's the fixed cost of issuance and then the underwriter's discount. Two numbers given. Is that the number or not? Is that something different?
Yeah, it might be that. Savings net of estimated fixed cost of issuance, yeah. Because some of that is underwriter's discount, yeah.
One of them has, on two-elevenB, on page nineteen of whatever this thing was ago, shows cost of issuance, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, then underwriter's discount, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-nine. So two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand to issue this.
And that's probably just one of that.
That's just one. So I come up with about, cost of us is about six-hundred.
Twenty-thousand.
Twenty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Sure.
Is that right?
And some of that is, the underwriter's discount is a cost of VRA, which, which isn't really a, well, it's a cost that comes off the top of their box.
I understand.
Yeah.
Trust me. I understand that. Then I read somewhere you have to have money in escrow account sitting somewhere to cover the cost of the bonds.
VRA, on the VRA?
I heard a gentleman yesterday talking about that.
On the VRA level, there is a, some sort of capital reserve fund. But there's not a local-level reserve fund that, that the county or the school board pays for. board pays for. There is one on the RSW deal, you might be thinking about RSW, because there they have a...
It was so loud and confusing, I couldn't really tell you.
Yes. So, so, yeah, on the RSW, on the jail authority deal, there, there is a reserve fund that's at the, that's at the RSW level that VRA required as part of that whole deal. And so that's a separate kind of pool of money that just has to be sitting there for the life of the bonds in case there's a default.
Kind of the way I understood was, and maybe he was talking about RSW, but it seemed like to me when he was talking about the schools and the county, you had to have this money sitting there to prove you could buy them back or whatever.
Yeah, 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 no, 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 sorry, he's talking about, yeah, so what he was talking about there, there's an escrow related to the VRA bonds that are getting advanced refunded.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's, that's not a county level thing, that's a requirement, because the 2011 and 2012 bonds aren't callable until 2021 and 2022. And so there's gonna be a two-year period on one and a three-year period on the other, where everybody, all the localities who are doing these refundings, and there's a bunch of them, because we kind of got this kind of crazy market right now, where this is a good deal for a lot of localities, there has to be an escrow sufficient to pay the VRA bonds that are gonna be callable in 2021 and 2022. And so the bonds that relate to that in the aggregate cost like 3.5% to 4% or something like that, but the escrow itself can only earn like 1.6%. So there's gonna be a period of two to three years where there's money in an escrow, but it's not earning quite as much as the, the rate on the bonds, so there's kind of extra money that has to be put in the escrow to cover that difference in the interest rate for that three-year period.
So, so that money Warren County doesn't have to put up, is what you're telling me?
Well, that, that's baked into all of this, but it's not, it's not a, it's not a Warren County controlled escrow, it's a VRA controlled escrow on the VRA bonds.
I don't know how Warren County comes up with that kind of money.
Well, they borrow it through this deal.
Okay. So we're borrowing, and what's our interest rate, I wonder, on borrowing that money and leaving it sit there for two or three years?
Well, that's what, that's what this...
Is that part of the 12.5% basis points they're charging to administer this, VRA?
No.
No?
No. That's just their ongoing fee. I mean, that's just in part of the, the aggregate amount that the county is borrowing, part of that money goes to fund that escrow.
What happens to that escrow in 2021 and 2022?
That pays off the VRA bond, the VRA deal.
I guess what we're buying back, what's being bought back, that money pays for.
Which, yeah.
Or refunded.
The VRA bonds, yeah, the VRA bonds get, they get paid off with that money in 2021 and 2022.
Because, I mean, you read all this, and, and of course, I'm not an attorney as you, and, you know, it talks about PU and MMDs and arbitrage and coupons and SLGSs, and you're sitting there trying to define what they truly mean, but you don't know, because the way I might use a word, doesn't mean the same thing in legal ease or whatever the court of verbiage is for, you know what I mean? It has a different outcome.
Sure.
So it's just a lot to digest, and, and it's a lot of money. 621,000 to pay to resell something, I just don't... But supposedly the first year...
Over 5 million price.
Are you?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that, that PV savings number has all those costs baked into it. I mean, that's after all those costs are factored in, that's the amount that you're saving relative to what, what the county would, that's what, but they're paying less relative to what they had been paying under the old structure. So all the costs, all the escrow fees, you know, all that sort of stuff is baked into that, that PV savings number, and that's the target that has to be hit before it, you know, before the county goes full.
So the 6 million is the net?
Yeah.
After.
Yep.
Those are some of the new numbers worked out. And, and the bonds are priced every day, fluctuate, just like the stock market?
Well, they, they, the pricing is fixed whenever the VRA bonds sell, which is gonna be like 30 days from now, and then, then, then we know what the actual savings are. That's where everything kind of locks in. And we can certainly, Ted unfortunately, with Davenport, couldn't be here, but we can certainly call him if y'all kind of wanna have kind of more discussion on that stuff.
I just got a lot more reading to do. I mean, honestly, before I can, I mean, I've tried to get through most of it today, and that's just a few of the questions I came up with, and I'm sure, sit down and read more, I'll have more questions. I mean.
Just a second.
Maybe, who knows? Wouldn't be hard. So if it was your money, you'd do it as what you're telling me?
Yeah.
You said, sure.
Yeah, I just refund my house, I mean, that's what, kind of what this market is right now. It's just, you know, it's, it's, it is what it is right now, and so, I mean, you can say you don't know if it's gonna go up or go down, but I mean, at least for myself, I was like, I don't know how it can go much lower than it is, so. I mean, and that's part of what, because one of the things that's sort of weird about this is it's being done as a taxable deal, because with the, with the Tax Act that happened in 17 and 18, advance refundings, which is what we're talking about, we're having this escrow, we can't do those on a taxes and basis because of changes, because of the Tax Act, but just the way that the rates have moved, A, everything's kind of going down, and, and the spread between the taxable and the tax exempt rate has gotten kind of small, has gotten quite small. So VRA is like, we can do this as a taxable deal, and it will still work out economically for all these people. And we've, we've analyzed it as, as a bond council on our own, and VRA's bond council has analyzed this as well, which is, the fact that we're turning this into taxable now doesn't mean we can't refund this some later point and do it on a tax exempt basis. We have to be, we have to make sure we no longer have this escrow out there, but once that escrow is gone, I mean, if it makes more economic sense in the future to refund this stuff on a tax exempt rate, the fact that we've done it taxable now doesn't kind of negate that possibility. So kind of long-term, it's just, there's not a lot of, there's no real kind of downside to doing it, to doing this.
What did the board of supervisors decide to do on this yesterday? Because I know it was in front of them, but I never heard the outcome.
They are going to vote on it on October the 15th.
Personally, I'd like to have a work session with them and see.
Have a little better understanding of what all of it is.
Get a bunch of, bunch of questions from all, I mean, you take, the more people you have delving into something, I think, the more answers you get, or maybe the more questions arise, I don't know. Kind of get an idea from everybody. I know what the pleasure of the board is.
If that's something that you're open to and time to do.
I mean, in, in terms of timing, we have to, the county and school board have to approve a resolution by October 22nd to be in this pool, to be in their full pool. If folks don't wanna act at that point, so that kind of fits it, you know, within their next meeting and your next meeting, that's within that timeframe. If it goes beyond that, then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, couldn't come up again until their next spring pool, which would be in April or, April or May of next year.
So what does, I guess, was it BRAS or?
VRA.
VRA?
Yeah.
I guess they just go around to all the entities and try to gather it up and refinance, and they put it all together and try to sell as one big group in the market?
Yeah, I mean, what they do...
Twice a year or?
They, well, they have a, they have a, a spring, a summer, they, usage of that'd be a spring and a fall, and now they sometimes do a summer one as well. Because they do, they do a pool that's for all kinds of, you know, small to kind of medium-sized localities. I mean, it, it's open to everybody, but the bigger localities, you know, like the, you know, like Arlington, you know, those sorts of guys, I mean, they have their own credit rating and stuff like that, so they're doing those kinds of deals on their own. But VRA ends up being a good option for lots of small and medium-sized places, just if they've got a bunch of different projects they can do, and it's easier than, you know, VRA can go into the big public market and do a one big bond deal, and then that theoretically kind of gets savings for all these smaller localities, rather than if everybody had to kind of do it on their own. And so they have a, a very large pool, because they've just, this structure has existed since basically like 2001 or something like that, so they just have lots of borrowers, new borrowers coming in, but also existing borrowers that are within the structure, and so they just kind of monitor everybody that's in that structure, and if they find C deals that look like they can, you know, benefit from a refunding, then they let folks know, get Davenport involved, and then kind of present it to folks.
Okay. I mean, just, I would like to see if we could all get together.
Is that something we're open to? That's what I'm thinking. Their next meeting, is that a work session meeting for them or?
It's a regular meeting. It's a yearly meeting.
And that's October the 15th, which is Tuesday. Are they gonna be voting on it at that time?
I'm sure.
So we would have to meet with them prior to that? If they're gonna be voting?
They vote before we vote, don't they? I think our meeting is 16.
16, the next one.
And it has to be before October the 22nd?
Yeah, if it's gonna be within this fall pool, then it would have to be...
And it doesn't extend the life of either one of the...
No. Correct. Correct.
Go ahead, go on the side.
I mean, that's, you can, you can do stuff like that, but that was never really in any of the discussions, I mean, it was just purely saving money and let's set it up and keep it like that, rather than messing around and stuff. I mean, we're also happy to do, I mean, it would probably be more Davenport-led than us, but if, if individual, you know, as long as we're not having more than two board members, we can have a call with folks if, you know, people wanna just kind of get more information or have more some discussion, and we can do that without it being an actual meeting, but, you know, or whatever folks' pleasure might be.
What is your most desire?
I was gonna make a suggestion. If we can't, if we can't get both groups completely together, who's on the building committee? You and Doug, get our building committee members together with whoever the county wants to have.
I'm sure Doug also has good understanding of this.
Yes. Get some help with it.
Sometimes I'd like to get into it. I mean, the purpose of this is to make some money out of it.
Yep.
Or save some of the things.
Or save some money. And it's the very thing that's around it, kind of, you know, based on the marketplace that you're seeing.
Do you all wanna reach out to?
Who would I reach out to?
I could do it. I could do it. I could touch something.
No, you tell me who it is, I'll...
Yeah, no, I'll reach, I'll, I'll set it up, yeah.
All right. I appreciate that.
Yeah. It was Archie Fox and... Dan?
She's searching. You can see it.
Maybe.
Jesse, I, I embarrassingly don't remember on this one, because we've done so many, and then we've refunded.
Yeah.
We talked about lease agreement. How does a lease agreement flow or work on this, this, these particular ones?
Well, so there's a lease, there's kind of a, what we're calling a ground lease, which is a, a lease that the school board signs, I think the county signs it as well, and then that is, goes to VRA.
Okay.
And then VRA has a lease back to the school board and the county. And that's, that's the thing that really sets up the payment stream from the county, that's where the county's saying, we're gonna make these payments. Sometimes we, before we were kind of in the VRA structure on this, we would be doing these deals with the EDA, it was, it was similar, where the EDA is issuing the bond, and, and they have the leasehold interest, but we've really gotten away from that.
In this case...
In this case, we, and there was some old stuff that had that, but we've, we've cleared all that stuff out back in 2011 and 2012.
So that doesn't exist in this one?
Correct.
So essentially you're saying the leasehold would be VRA?
Yeah. They, they, yeah, I mean, they, nominally, they, they have, on their level, they have a leasehold deed of trust, where they're assigning it to their trustee, because theoretically, if, it's really the VRA bonds, that there would be some default on, and then the trustee would have to enforce whatever, I guess that.
So on the county side, what's our plan? That's the reason we got into it, so...
I mean, Davenport, you know, Davenport pretty regularly kind of is monitoring this stuff and kind of talking with them about this stuff, so it's, I mean, on their end, I think they, they're pretty up to speed on how it all works.
Since, I guess, since the Skyline was built, how many of these, I figure we've done?
Well, we've done, the one that's involved here was for the Ray Avenue Middle School, as we called it. There was done, one done for Warren County Middle School when it was constructed, and then the one you most recently did, that included part of Ressie Jeffries and some other county projects that was done, and then we've refunded so many times.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I was asking, how many, how many refundings have we done? Yeah, I mean, I think...
I can tell you all the stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think, at least as, as far as me going back and looking at stuff, I mean, the, the, the real kind of project deals were back in 2004.
Yeah, really, yeah, the biggest.
And then, and that was, and that was one really big thing, and then that kind of got broke, refunded in a couple of different pieces, which is what we're looking at now. So that's the, kind of, the biggest, the real sort of project component.
Have we lost on any of them?
Haven't lost?
We have lost anything.
No, no, I mean, each time they've been refunded, there's been a saving.
Yeah, you're bringing savings.
Yeah, savings. Otherwise, it wouldn't do it, you realize.
Yeah, I mean, and they're, they've all kind of been set up like this, where we have, I mean, there's a savings, I mean, that's one of the good things about VRA, is they can say, say like, well, this is what our savings target is, and if you can't, if it can't get that, when, you know, when you guys go to price, if you can't get that savings, then we're just out.
We're not stuck with it, yeah.
Right.
When's the last time we did one abroad, do you know? Roughly?
Well, I know we did these in 2011 and 12, but I think they're...
I feel like there was stuff in 14, but I can't remember exactly what it was for. I mean...
And if you realize those savings, where do those savings go? Where do we see it as, as a...
The county, the, the, yeah, the county, and what's their lease payment or debt service to the, the bond holder?
So you saved that money here, where, where was it spent over here, I guess is my question? You know, what do we use it for? For more teachers, or, or more policemen, or whatever? I mean, I wonder, wonder where you realize the savings? You know? Yeah, but I mean, if you're talking, what'd that say, $350,000 a year? Not a lot of money, but, but, I mean, pays quite a few school teachers.
School buses?
What do we need? Yeah, that's three buses with the money left over. So I guess, you know, how do we realize where that savings is at? What, what do we have this show for?
My question. Well, my guess is the county would say that they have that much in savings to show that either they were able to do other things, maybe not all school-related, I don't know, but they have increased our budget each year typically by an amount similar to that. So you could say had, they not had those savings, one of two things, they would either have raised taxes more than they did, or they would not have been able to give the school board the increases that they have given us in our operating budget over this, this period of time.
Okay.
But can they save wherever, any of that, exactly what it went to? It, it, you know, sort of gets absorbed in the, the whole of the budget, I think.
It's counted in the bucket.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, I mean, and it's just the way that it's set up in terms of, it's, it's on the county's books rather than, you know, the school board, so it's, that's just the way that it's, that it gets paid.
But they usually probably exercise the, initiate the, accepting the money, the savings money.
Okay.
Just a minute.
All right, so, Mrs. Shepherd, get back. Mr. Rosen, see if you can come up with Thomas, to get a better understanding.
I'm sure I can.
Okay.
Yeah, and definitely, I, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to be involved in that too, but also definitely, you know, kind of, anybody from Davenport, it's probably helpful to kind of walk through all this stuff.
Whether in person or on the phone, I'll figure that out. Okay. All right. Is there any further business?
I do have something I'll hand out to you if you'd like. Superintendent's search folders, and what I did was, after I talked with you, I put together a copy of the RFP that we put out five years ago, or four years. or four years, five years ago. And also a copy of the survey that you sent out to the community and staff and things like that, as far as what they wanted to see in a superintendent. The timeline, which coincidentally follows just about where we're at, where you're at in the process now, only five years later. And then a copy of the contract we had with Real Synergy. Is that the, the search group that did your search? So I'll give this to you, this is a start that you're thinking about or whatever.
I don't think we have to go out front to Jordan.
We'll do it, okay.
No further business? We need to draw a...